April sixth, two thousand twenty-three, it's nine A M. First of all, the agenda, is there any changes to the agenda? I guess we pledge first of all, sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So then, is there any changes to the agenda at all? Not, I'll look for a motion to approve their agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion to have a second.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Next, do you have the minutes for our last meeting on March seventh, two thousand twenty-three? Is there any corrections to the minutes? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the March seventh, two thousand twenty-three minutes. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Next, do you have counts payable? Is there any questions? And there's a supplement also with the count payable. Any questions, any of the bills?
How does the county coroner get paid by visits or by? Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, I was just wondering, does he get paid like a salary or by each visit that he makes or what?
Each call he goes on, correct?
Each visit, each call, whatever.
Yeah, each call he gets called on his.
Okay. I was just wondering, so. Is it, how much is it per call?
I'd have to look at it, it's in the contract.
It's no big deal, I just saw him pop up here for twenty-one hundred bucks or twenty-two hundred bucks, so. Twenty-five hundred bucks, so. That was just a curious question. Huh?
Any other questions? Yeah, I think if you look at the, for the county, it was, he travels a hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-two cents, and then there's twenty-four hundred dollars for calls in March for the corner. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would, there's one item under the general fund that I would like to, not that I approve or disapprove, but I think the bill for five thousand four hundred and fifty bucks to the auditor, state auditor, for the final audit bill, if it would be acceptable to everybody, I'd like us to approve all the other bills. And since we have the state, the audit on the agenda later, I think we could bring that line item down into that discussion. So I would move that we approve all the bills as submitted with the exception of the state auditor bill and move that bill to the discussion line under our audit.
I'm fine with that.
Do you have a second then?
I'll second that.
You have a second? The other discussion? Okay, roll call vote, then. Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next, we'll have the National County Government Month proclamation. You want to come forward on that, or do you have anything to say on that, or do you just want me to read the proclamation? I thought I was gonna have you read it, but. Okay, this is, April two thousand twenty-three is the National County Government Month, and it, whereas is the nations of three thousand sixty-nine counties are serving more than three hundred and thirty million Americans, providing essential services to create safe, healthy and vibrant communities, whereas counties fulfill a vast variety of responsibilities and deliver services that touch nearly every aspect of our residents' lives. Whereas Stark County and all the counties take pride in their responsibility to protect and enhance the health and well-being and safety of our residents, in efficient and cost savings, efficient cost save, costs, efficient safety ways. Whereas, under leadership of the National Association of Counties President Denise Winfrey of the National County Association is demonstrating how counties rise, demonstrating explicable resilience and inclusive solvability and empowerment. Whereas each year since nineteen ninety-one, the National Association of Counties have encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs and services. Whereas Stark County will spotlight departments and the service they provide through social media posts, provide activity books for elementary aged children and throughout the month, and celebrate our employees and elected officials. Now, therefore being resolute of that, that Stark County does hereby proclaimate April two thousand twenty-three as National County Government Month and encourage all county officials, employees and residents to participate in county government celebration activities. I'd look for a motion to approve that proclamation.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, state aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. Next, we'd like to recognize some milestones in years of service recognition for, because we have five employees here today, that we'd like to recognize. I guess I'd like the department heads, if they want to come forward too, for these, when the employees announced.
First one I have for her is for Norma Raybault, she has five years with Stark County.
Thank you.
Lisa Heiser has five years with Stark County. Barbara Kasher, five years also with Stark County. That's ten years with the county. We have one retiree as Lita Pressler, she had nineteen years and eight months with the county.
Okay, next we'll have the sheriff's report.
Commissioner, before Corey goes, because it's kind of sheriff's related, the cost is four hundred dollars per call for the county coroner?
Oh, wow.
Just so you know, so there were six.
All right, Chairman Commissioners, good morning. This is the March highlights for the Stark County Sheriff's Department. Total calls for service for the month of March, one thousand six hundred and fifty-four, that's up from one thousand three hundred and thirty-four last year. Two hundred and six traffic stops, that's up from two hundred and five last year, we'll take it. Three hundred and eighty-nine public relations stops, that's up from two hundred and seventeen last year. Twenty-two bar checks, that's up from twenty-one last year. Ten theft-related calls for service, that's up from five last year. Forty-one canine usages. Five truck rig stops, and she was involved in twenty-three other calls for service. She just got back mid-month, last month, late month. Responded to eighteen accidents, of those eighteen accidents, zero were pedestrian, zero fatality, which is pretty good considering the weather conditions we had. Three hit and run, three injury, and ten property. Transports, there was ten, excuse me, ten prisoner transports, seventeen court transports, one medical, two juvenile, one assist, and four mental health. There were ninety-nine total arrests for the month of March. We're seeing quite an increase in narcotics, traffic and arrests. We participated in that large bus that you saw on the Dickinson Press. There was also another one last weekend out on the interstate that was quite large that we assisted the highway patrol with. And then, of course, the little stuff is nonstop. Eldon and I will be traveling to Deadwood next week for sheriff's and chiefs meeting there, two days. Had our Easter egg hunt in Bellfield last weekend, that was fantastic. Have another one in Dickinson this weekend. Commissioners White and Claris, if you've never been to one of our events before, you're sure welcome to attend that. Help us out, we could sure use the help. And anyone else that wants to attend? Eleven o'clock Prairie Hills Mall.
Where are your ears?
Yeah, where are your bunny ears? We actually split it up into three different age groups this year, so we are in three different locations in the mall, so we could use the extra help for sure. Thank you, Commissioner Marsh, to you and your family for helping us with some funding for that as well. Kind Hearts Project. Twenty twenty-four budget, I'll come back to that in a minute, because I don't remember what I was gonna talk about. The, there was a pursuit last weekend that, Jesse, help me out what day that was, Saturday night? Ultimately, it started in Bismarck. Gal was pulled over for suspicion of DUI. She fled from that traffic stop, Bismarck PD is not pursued, so she went on her way. Later on, she was called in as a reckless driver on the interstate between Richardson and Taylor. We got with her about immediately after that call and pursued her with the troopers to mile marker sixty-four where they spiked her. She lost three of her tires, I can't get into too much of the details, but ultimately, the pursuit ended west of Dickinson, and two of our squad cars were significantly damaged. Thanks to her, one of the squad cars, our sergeant forfeited himself to keep her from going into oncoming traffic after she spun around. Was gonna continue back eastbound into westbound traffic, so. Definitely a well deserved damage there. And then the car, other squad car was ran into about that same time, so. Jesse, what's the damage on those two?
I don't have to estimate on one vehicle, the sergeant's vehicle's sixty dollars. The other one's gonna be more.
And hopefully, they don't total that, because we're struggling to find vehicles as it is, so. Just a little update on that, guys did really well, it was a a good arrest in the end, but. The next question I have, are you, if, I'm hoping you guys will help us out and be willing to purchase some signs, signage. I've been visiting with the fire departments in Stark County. They helped us out several times on the interstate this year, especially during that fatality. Between Taylor and Gladstone, during that really dense fog, what we would like to do is purchase some LED signs. I don't have any cost yet, I'll sure bring that to the next meeting. Just seeing what your feel is, I guess, on this. We would store those at each of the fire departments, so they would stay charged and ready to go. And then when we call the fire departments out to help us on the interstate, they would just bring that signage with. That would state, you know, road closure or detour. Certainly, the DOT has that stuff, but the response time for the fire departments is much faster. And obviously, we're gonna call them out on serious traffic incidents anyway, so. I don't know what your thoughts or opinions are on purchasing something like that, but certainly it's, you know, significant to public safety, so. Hoping that you would participate in that purchase.
Are these the road signs that you tow behind a vehicle, and they're like?
Well, it's gonna be something we can set up independently, so they would be able to haul it, something they could haul with their trucks, and then set it up, and then create some distance between them and the sign.
So not like an attenuator sign?
Not like a trailer, no. So I'm hoping the cost really won't be that significant, but who knows anymore?
I guess I'd be for it, but you know, we gotta know the cost before you can say yes or no.
So that's something I can bring to you guys next month?
Yes.
All right, okay, twenty twenty-four budget, I knew I'd remember if I took a minute. Starting to work on that, I assume most of the departments are starting to look at that. Do we have any inclination as to what the percentage might be at? Is that something you guys are going to think about shortly here, or what can we expect with that? I'm staring at you, Neil.
Surprise. Nor, nor that's, we start talking about it this summer, I guess, or late summer is when we start, you know, talking about budgets, I guess.
Okay.
It's kind of where I'm at, just starting that thought process, so don't wanna.
Okay.
But wanna have some other conversations, I know what the state's doing, so, but until that's finalized.
So you guys think in July-ish?
That's when we usually start, right?
It's usually around July and August when we start the budget process, yeah.
Okay.
Also, we need a motion for their out-of-state prove of travel.
I'd move to approve out-of-state travel for the sheriff's department.
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried, thank you.
Anything else?
Yes. Why do you think the calls for service went up by three hundred and some calls in one month like that? Was it the weather, or?
Certainly, that can always be weather-related, but we've been doing some different things internally to try to stimulate proactivity, so I think that it's working.
Looks like it's working then, good.
Thank you.
Cheers.
Next, we have the road department, Al Heiser.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
I just love it when the weatherman is totally wrong. Didn't have to send any plows, a little bit of ice on Highway ten yesterday, but further east, nothing west, so that was kind of a good deal. Next week, with the weather kind of changing, we're gonna start doing our cracks seal. We've been waiting since February to do that, but the weather hasn't really been prohibitive to do that. We're gonna try some new seal this year on some, on some roads. They got a new rubber out that will, when you put it in a crack, we have to route it, but it'll expand two hundred percent. So hopefully, them cracks will open in the winter and they'll stay closed, don't get any moisture, so. They're actually gonna donate the rubber to us and the machine to use, so we're gonna try it on some, but it's gotta be a virgin crack, it's never had any type of oil or any other thing in it, so hopefully, that'll work. We've got some roads, we've been doing that over the years, just strictly putting rubber in. Most of the roads, we're putting in MC oil to seal the cracks, but that's gonna start happening next week here. Hopefully, we can get that done before spring gets in, we gotta start blading, because that takes quite a crew to get that all done.
So when you put that rubber, I mean, it's not flush then, is it?
No, you.
How do you not catch it when you're?
Well, that's the secret, there's, you can see a lot of rubber put on in cracks, it's on top of the road, it's smeared all over, it's laying all over. Randy is very meticulous about how it's done. You actually cut a nice route, router groove in the asphalt, we get router, and then just leave a little hole, so when asphalt pushes together, it doesn't stick up above. There's a science to it, you gotta have a, you gotta have a good attitude that you're out doing it. You just can't smear it on because it's gonna come off. So it's kind of a little bit of a science. You know, we've been talking about that bridge over there, and I'll let Jim over at South Art on the funding. I think I'd credit Paul and Jim, they kind of, after the meeting, Paul had brought up about emergency services, and they wouldn't fund that bridge, and so we wrote up a letter and sent it to the DOT, and after further review, they now are gonna fund that for construction in twenty-four, so hopefully, we can get that all done. There was only one little catch, we got a, the bridge that we actually got approved to take out south on Highway eighty-five, we gotta bundle them together to bid, so we have an RFP gonna go out pretty soon here to select the design for that, and then they'll be actually tied together and bid, hopefully, this fall for twenty-four construction, so. Thanks, Paul and Jim, for kind of getting that pushed along, I can't take a lot of credit other than I resent the letter, so. Another item, I've been kind of following legislature with some flexible transportation funding. Hopefully, we can get some funding, I think it's, there's a little bit of debate going on about how it's all gonna play out, but hopefully, we can get some funding to pave our eastern bypass this summer, so. I'm just really hopeful that'll happen. I mean, and you probably also heard too, that the governor signed a bill for reimbursement, some snow removals, so Shawna and Todd will be getting that off to them, so we can get some reimbursement, because you know, just last month alone, if you look at our fuel bills, we burned up fifty thousand dollars worth of diesel fuel, Paul, in snow. So that'll really help to kind of heal that up. And the only other thing I have is surplus property, I think you've got a list of some stuff. We did some facelifting over in the Bellfield shop.
Can I?
Sure.
You jumped that, and just, you know, I visited before the meetings, and it's, it's the U.S. Postal Service with their.
Oh, sure.
They're basically getting very aggressive on their eighteen-inch rule, and so I know Bernie and you made some contact with Postmasters, so. Eighteen inches away from hard surface is going to, what they're asking for, and you can expand on it, is basically anything that's, any post, mailbox that's further away of hard surface or road edge, more than eighteen inches will not be serviced, they're just gonna bring your mail back to the post, so. I know I've got twenty-five neighbors over east that are fired up about it, so I know, because in their letter, it says county rule, so I don't think we wanna go that far, but I think we need to get them to a point of flexibility, so.
Yeah, I've also got a lot of calls, and they want to actually move mailboxes where, you know, Bernie and I talked to them yesterday. It's actually dangerous, because you know, it's the direction of travel.
Yep.
They got a car that the steering wheel's on the right side, they want them on the right side. If it's on the left side, I mean, it's kind of dictating, apparently, what happened to some carrier retired, and it didn't matter to her, but so there's, they're creating a lot of havoc, but I think that we're gonna have to just put our foot down and say, this is what we're gonna do, because we can't have mailboxes out where we're gonna hit them with the plows, especially on Highway ten. It's different if it's in a subdivision where we're slow speed, but where we're high-speed plowing and winging, and they just get to be in the way.
Well, and I can't think of one single piece of farm equipment that moves down the road that doesn't extend beyond the, you know, the duals on the tractor or anything, so it's just gonna be a nightmare, so.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll have to kind of address that.
Thank you.
And then, like I said, the surplus property, you know, we did some work in Bellfield shop over there, it's, you know, that shop's over fifty years old, and we re-insulated and put some tin in, and went through some of the drawers, so that's where all that surplus basically come out of there, it's fifty years of hoarding over there. So, anyway, that's, if anybody's got any questions on that, or.
When's that sale, we don't have a date set for it?
Yes, it's gonna be held, it's gonna be advertised, it'll be in Sheffield at their annual sale. So he'll have it advertised, and I think in the paper and some other websites for two weeks, that's what our requirements are.
Do you need a motion to authorize that?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, to declare it surplus.
Okay, I would move that we declare, as per Al's presentation, surplus property available for bid or auction.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Have a second. The other discussion? Roll call vote, then Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next, we'll have Interstate Engineering.
Mr. Chairman, good morning.
Morning.
Commissioners. Al kind of stole all my good news, so. But I would like to bring up that after the last meeting, Al and I were approached by Jeremy Wood from Northern Plains, who suggested a proposal to shift the funding from one of his projects to our South Hard project. So that kind of got the ball rolling, the ball rolling on drafting an appeal. So we did that, adding that Superintendent Heiser had spoken with Commissioner Claris, who was concerned about access for emergency services in the area. So I'd like to thank them both for contributing. So Al pretty much covered it, do we have any, any questions on the update there?
Questions? Okay.
All right.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you much.
Next, we go to Highland Engineering.
Good morning.
Morning.
Like this, Highlands Engineering. A couple of design projects we're working on, the one north of Richardson on Eighty-third Avenue Southwest. We did finally get our final environmental document approved after nine weeks, a review by the DOT. We'll be submitting our final plans here shortly. We did end up having to move the bid letting to this fall, because the DOT will not let us bid early and then have a completion date a year and a half out, so. Doesn't really hurt us too much, but it's just another thing that's being pushed. So again, precast culverts don't get, take a lot of lead time to get those constructed, so. The other one is the three low-water crossings. Submitted the draft environmental document at the beginning of February, and we're still waiting on comments for that. With that timeline, again, looks like that's gonna get pushed to this fall as well, unfortunately, the bid letting, so. And twenty twenty-four construction, so. Other construction engineer, the construction engineering project, the box culvert. This one's down on Eightieth Avenue, southeast of Richardson. That's going to be, the pre-construction meeting should be held here in the next month or so. The box culvert will not be built till mid-June, so I'm expecting probably July-ish, August for construction to start there, so. I think that's all I got, anybody got any questions?
And I would like to add a little, Mike's report there, them three that were bridge removals, them are gonna be coshed a hundred percent by the feds for, if we take them off of the system and turn them low-water crossing, they'll pay a hundred percent of the construction design and the, and the construction, so.
Yeah, which was one of my questions, so all these three projects are a hundred percent, or do we have a cost?
Or do we have a cost? And I guess I was worried about the one that were, that we may have had some budgeting concerns, where we plowed into '23, and now the project won't be done until '24, where we might have to make an adjustment and put that into a reserve, you know, so that we have those issues of reserving funds for those, or what's your, either Mike or Al could handle that question.
I'm trying to keep all these straight here on the funding. Yeah, I should put that in my report. So the 83rd Avenue is federal funded.
We did an RFP, so that portion that's not paid will be paid by, by the state, because that's, if that's a project, the one that's south to Richardson.
This is north.
That was bid last year and not to be done, it'll be completed this year.
The north one, no.
The north one. Yeah, we, that one, that, that'll be funded, but we probably, we're going to pay the construction design, but when it comes to, after the bid, we'll probably go off for an RFP for the construction engineering.
Correct. But, and, but how is that coshed? The, all the work is 100%, but we pay for the design?
Correct.
Okay. And so most of those costs are incurred already?
You're right.
Got it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go to Northern Plains Engineering.
Good morning. I got just some real, real brief comments, not a whole lot for updates. Construction projects, obviously, nothing's really happened in the last month. 32nd, 107th, I would think maybe in the next two or three weeks, whenever the snow melts, they'll finish that up. 131st, that was bid in, I believe, February, that's still looking at a late fall starting date, but it should, should happen this year from, from what our standing is. As far as design projects, there's that project on 127th, south of Georgian Kavishas, which has those environmental issues. We've kind of just salvaged that project until we get funding. You know, we could spend a whole bunch of money and really not get very far. So we got the survey done, got the design done, but until there's funding, we'll just kind of put that on a back burner. So until we get funding, we've kind of suspended our efforts on that project. So that's all I really had to report.
Any questions?
Jeremy, I actually had a question. I had a couple, and maybe this would be a good one for Al, too. I had a couple people ask me how the county determines if they're going to pave something like out, like if there's like a new area, how they determine which ones to.
Would that be like a county road situation or a subdivision or?
Well, I guess either. They're just wondering, like.
Yeah, I guess from my perspective, it's, a lot of it's based on the maintenance costs and the traffic loading on it, as far as 32nd, 107th, for instance, that's why that one's going to be paved. Subdivisions is probably somewhat similar, too. It's probably based partly on maintenance.
Kind of based on maintenance and occupancy, you know, once they get full, you know, then it'd be a lot easier to pave than if there's only like two houses in there.
Okay. That's kind of what I had said to them, but I wasn't 100% sure how you guys determine that, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have KLJ Engineering.
Hi, good morning. Just here to give a brief update. So our, our first two projects really hasn't changed since the last time. We're still planning to go do our wetland mitigation monitoring this summer over on 47th Street, and then we're still waiting, you know, on that intersection of Highway 10 and 116th on that HCP funding application. That's typically around June, we'll hear on that. As far as our chip seal project, we sent out the SOV letters on March 9th. We started the environmental document, and then we're waiting on the comment period to end to, to finish that up. We'll be starting on some plans here, and then our bid opening schedule for this November for next year construction. Is there any questions?
Any questions? Not, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go to Mr. Josephson, you go ahead with planning and zoning then.
Good morning. Chairman Franchuk, Commissioner Steve Josephson, County Planner. You have one request for rezoning in front of you, and it's located in the, excuse me, it's located in the Bellfield area. It's in, it's in the southeast quarter of Section 29, Township 139 North, Range 99 West, for approximately 119.57 acres. Earlier this, this year, the County Commission vacated three lots in the Richard subdivision, and what Mr. Richard wants to do is he wants to combine those with, with a larger piece of property. He wants to rezone those three from industrial to agricultural, and, and then combine it with, with the rest of his property and use it for agricultural uses. The Planning and Zoning Commission and staff both recommend approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions?
And by the way, the applicant's representative is here in case you have questions for him.
Anyone have any questions on this?
I have none.
Thing was discussed in one of our previous meetings, too, so. Okay, if not, I'll look for a motion to approve or deny this request.
Chairman Franchuk, I would move to approve the rezoning, RZ 01-23, the Dennison-Beth Richard property, rezoning from industrial to agricultural. Land's located in Section 29, Township 139 North, Range 99 West.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any other discussion? Lot of roll call vote, then Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
And the chair votes, I, a motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, and we'll, we'll send a notice, even though the applicant's rep is here, we'll note, we'll send a notice anyway, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Josephson, just a quick question.
Yes.
What is the deadline for your response on the RFP on the comprehensive plan?
Well, we have the deadline for the response.
Yeah.
Well, first, we, we had to, we were supposed to have meetings this week to interview.
Got it.
And we had to cancel those because of the anticipated snow emergency, so there will be interview meetings on the 17th and 21st.
Thank you.
And then after that, we are hoping to bring something to, to County Commission. Don't know how long that'll take. We may ask, you know, after the contract is reviewed, we may ask for, instead of waiting for June, we may ask if the County Commission could meet, have a special meeting just to discuss that contract, but that's, let's wait and see what happens after the interviews.
Next, we have a resolution that was presented with the State's Attorney Engelstad with regards to a surplus of a cell phone that's, was used by employee for, there, that's, it's actually an extra surplus of 2018 phone, and I guess I would look for a motion or to approve or deny this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the 2018 iPhone used by the victim witness advocate, which is presently used as personal and county matters, and which is less that, valued at less than $1,000, be sold back to her after the exit IT review for $1.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any other discussion? Lot of roll call vote, Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Chair votes, I, a motion carries. Next, we'll go to the auditor authorization for event permits.
So what I'm asking for with the commission is, obviously, we kind of cleaned up a lot of the permitting and alcohol permitting and gaming permitting this last, I would say, year. And what I am hoping the commission would be partial to would be authorizing myself and my deputy, Lana Yanner, to approve just the event permits and special event permits, not the liquor licensing or anything like that, just the event stuff. So that way, when somebody comes in and they're doing a raffle, you know, it's not a whole month out. We would sign off, and I can give you a list at the commission meetings of the ones that I approved, but I was hoping that the commission would just authorize myself or my deputy auditor to approve those.
Any discussion on that?
I have no problem with that. Yes, I make that motion that you can approve the special event permits.
Okay, have a motion to approve the special events permits by the auditor's office, the deputy and auditor. Have a second?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
I do have some other question. In the event that you would actually, would there be any reason that you would deny a permit?
I think the only reason would be if there is a gaming, so how the permitting works is, like, let's say, for example, there is a gaming establishment where they want to hold the event, that gaming establishment has to agree to shut down their games during that event, so they can't, you know, have pull tabs or what have you during the event that this is going on. So that would be the only thing that would kind of prevent somebody from doing a permit is if that gaming establishment, they didn't get permission or the go from that gaming establishment to shut down their gaming for that event.
They have preference? They have preference?
Yes. Like, the gaming establishment is paying to have their gaming in that establishment, and so if they want to bring in, I know one of the ones that comes up a lot is like poker runs. So I know they do those a lot, like in the Lefer area. This is really where it only comes up with Stark County, outside of the city, and we have one gaming establishment in the Lefer area bar, which we're actually going to go over here in a minute. That is our only gaming establishment that we have that's just county, and they have the contract to be in that bar, and so they have to agree to be closed for 21 and pull tabs if they do a, when they do their poker tournaments.
And that's state, state rule?
That's state law, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Lot of that, or go, roll call vote, Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Chair votes, I, a motion carries. And we have a permit for Regent Development Corporation, it's at the Lefer KC Club, gaming license request.
So this is the only license that the county gets as far as gaming goes, is the one we just talked about, the Lefer, that's located in Lefer, and it's, the gaming organization is the Regent Development Corporation, and they renew every year. So they have both 21 and pull tab, regular pull tabs and electronic pull tabs.
Okay, I'd look for a motion to approve or deny this request for permit.
I would make the motion to approve the Regent Development Corporation application for a gaming site.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Chair votes, I, a motion carries. Next, we have a quest for permit for Dickens and Police Association event permit for Heroes Ball.
So this would, this is a great example of one that me and Lana could just sign off on and send you a list of ones that are approved. This is going to be at August House, and it's for the Heroes Ball, and this is their permitting application.
I would move to approve the Dickens and Police Association application.
Second.
Motion to second? Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
And chair votes, I, a motion carries. Next, we'll go to the Southwest Multi Correction Center's agreement on that? I guess there's an agreement that, the last one was in 1982, so there's an update to this agreement. Mr. Claris, do you have any comment on that?
Uh, yeah, I, as, as part of my portfolio, as I sit on the Swimsea Board, and the original agreement that created that organization was drafted in 1982, and originally, Adams County was on that document. They never did join the Association of Counties that were, that are part of this agreement. So this agreement update basically adds Golden Valley County and deletes Adams County as an owner in the agreement. The, for lack of a better term, deck has been reshuffled as far as ownership due to the 2020 census. So Stark County is, the original agreement, we had 55% and change ownership with the current status of the census. We've increased our percentage now to 72%, I believe, or, or, no, excuse me, I think it's 62% in the new agreement, 72%, sorry. So that, that ownership has been updated, and there was a language in the old agreement about building and paying off bonds, and that is since that's water under the bridge and we are moving forward. So it's just a, it's an update, a well-needed update to an agreement that was very old. I've also consulted State's Attorney Engelstad on this agreement, and she sees no problems with the agreement as is.
Commissioner Claris, I actually had a question.
Yes.
Did you find out anything more about the ownership portion? Are all these counties actually have ownership of the building itself?
Yes. In the original agreement, it was a lease purchase agreement with Stark County, the Southwest Multi Correctional Board entered, was, provided a lease purchase option, and is my full understanding that each county is a partial owner of at least 62% of that
Any other questions on this agreement?
So would the county that left the agreement, Adams County? And I see that Golden Valley County is now in the agreement, so they just, how does that work as far as?
Adams County actually never, ever officially joined the agreement.
Okay, so if, if Golden Valley is now part of it, they are automatically given ownership?
Well, they, they've been a part of this for many, many years, from my understanding. Now, I'm not exactly entirely sure when they entered into this, this arrangement with all these other counties, but they've been a part of this agreement for many years, yes.
So part of the new agreement, Stark County was 55.2%, we are 72.19% currently, and then Dunn County, followed by Bowman County, with the highest percentages.
Mr. Claris, I'd have a question if you entertain. That building is owned by the counties, is the lot still owned by the city?
That is my understanding. There's a 99-year lease initially, the city, the county actually.
The reason I bring it up is, I was up there the other day with, a number of years back, we put a micro-surfacing across that. I think the city's got a big chip seal project this summer, we should entertain if we can get a quote to, when they're in town, is to chip seal that lot to kind of, it's, it needs some repair. So if, if you guys would be up for that, I could find out who's got the project and get a price for it, because it, it needs to be addressed. I think last time, we were, had to pay for the micro-surfacing, the maintenance of it?
There is a board, there's an LEC board, both Bernie and I, and Karen sit on that, and I believe that would probably be something that we could probably discuss at that meeting, because we're, that LEC board- And I believe that would probably be something that we could probably discuss at that meeting, because we're, that LEC board basically takes care of all the maintenance of that building. I think, well, Sheriff Lee.
Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion?
Yeah, I think just for clarification, so there's no misunderstanding, we own, under this new agreement, we would own seventy-two percent of sixty-two percent.
That's correct.
Okay, just so we're on the same page.
Any other discussion? I'll look for a motion to approve or deny this agreement then.
Chairman Franchuk, I would move to approve the updated Southwest Multi County Correction Center Agreement, uh, as presented.
And authorize my signature on the cre-
Excuse me.
And authorize my signature on the contract?
Yes, I would ask for your signature on this contract.
Okay, my motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? We'll roll call vote, then Commissioner Clarice.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Chair votes, I motion, carries. Next, we go for audit, stay travel for auditor's office.
Um, I just wanted to get the commissioner's permission for me and my deputy auditor are going to be attending the twenty-twenty-three NACO Conference in Austin, Texas, um, July twenty-first through the twenty-fourth. Um, nobody from Stark County has ever been to a National Association of Counties Conference. So it'll be our first time going. Um, we will be letting the North Dakota Association of Counties know that we are going, so that way we can participate with um, kind of fall under their umbrella from, from the North Dakota Association of Counties too. Um, it was much cheaper um, for me to order our hotel room and everything outside of, because we did it. I don't need any budget, extra budget or anything like that, because I actually took those funds out of my twenty-twenty-two budget to order the hotel and purchase the airlines. Um, I know I had my deputy auditor quite concerned that we were gonna be staying in a broom closet. Once we found out how much those hotel rooms normally cost. But because none of the official dates had came out yet, we actually got our hotel rooms for um, a hundred and I want to say twenty-something dollars as opposed to three hundred dollars a night. So we might be staying in a broom closet. I'm very sorry, Lana. But we will be going if you guys are, allow us to leave the state.
Just a quick question, Karen. Um, you have here, no additional funding would be needed. So did you pay for the, the hotel and airlines in the bud- calendar year twenty-twenty-two to register for this convention?
Correct. I paid for the airlines and the hotel from our twenty-twenty-two travel budget.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Look for a motion then.
I'll make a motion to approve the um, travel to the annual conference in Texas for our auditor and our deputy auditor.
Do you have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, then Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Clarice.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
And chair votes, I motion, carry. Next, I think we'll go to the, uh, I received a letter from uh, the Regional Director, Jessica Oderman with regards to the Badlands Human Service Center Regional Advisory Group. They are looking for us to appoint a commissioner from, or commission to be serve on that board. This, the previous one is no longer a member of the commission, so they need to repoint whether there's, that board consists of the directors for the human services zones for the region. And the public health director, and then two commissioners, county commissioners, one from our county, one from another county, and then there's five other additional members. Yes, my com- comment on that is it, it's kind of related to the, the Human Service Regional Council. And that portfolio is held by Commissioner Clarice, so I guess I would recommend that we probably appoint him to that, to do the relation there.
Mister Chairman, I would move that we appoint Paul Clarice to the Badlands Human Service Center Advisory Board.
Okay. Have a second, okay, a second. Any other discussion?
Uh, Chairman Franchuk, I was just curious, I mean, has there, has this ever been established as a portfolio previously, in previous commissions?
Not that I'm aware of at all.
They're just requesting, requesting a commissioner, just.
Right. There's a letter in your packet there to explain, to explain a bit.
Well, I would suggest possibly that we, you know, to place some importance on um, this area of our county that we possibly add this, add this as a portfolio in the future. Um, so it's, do we, do we know what county commissioner actually sat on this previously? Um, where, has there ever been a Stark County?
I don't know if they've met recently, I guess it was in the years past.
I want to say that it was a different county commissioner, and so now they just would like a Stark County one this time around.
Okay.
I guess the motion, then you want to amend that to state that being a portfolio?
If the rest of the board would be okay with that, that's, that's fine.
Now, what about the terms? Because usually these are like um, four-year terms. So you, there wouldn't be a portfolio that you would change every year, so what?
Do we know the, the uh,
I believe.
Requested term?
They're two-year terms.
Are they two-year?
Um, and probably much like the uh, Social Services Board or the Zone Board, I imagine they're probably, there's probably one-year and two-year terms, that, you know, alternating years, odd and even years, so that they don't have a lot of turnover. But I believe this is probably a two-year.
And they meet twice a year?
Yeah.
I know that there is multiple counties that participate in this. Um, I don't, and it says two county commissioners, so I know that it's, they're asking for one from Stark. And I thi- I'm pretty sure that the previous one was from a different county. Um, so is there any issues with maybe the following after this two-year term that they would want a different county that's not participating? You know, because it's just two county commissioners?
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be a portfolio. I think it just, if we assign somebody, two years, assign somebody else.
Yeah, see if they want another Stark County commissioner.
Yeah, and I, I think we have other boards that we participate in under the same discretion, right? So.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of finding Commissioner Clarice to the Board of the Padlands Human Service Center Regional Advisory Group? All in favor, state aye. Those opposed, motion carry. Next, we could do the Stark County, how was it, or you had some comment on that, this thought from the auditor?
Okay, so I put in your, your packets, kind of a letter that um, I received from the executive director, Derek Johnson. Um, last, I want to say it was last year, um, you, um, we put out the application for, to accept applications, because we had two Stark County Housing Authority Board openings. Um, and then we added Bernie to it. Um, one of the applications that was submitted was from Terica Holmes. And um, since since she has only attended one meeting, which was in April of twenty-twenty-two. And um, they have not been able to get in contact with her. And so I looked up the Sentry Code, um, the Stark County Commission. In order for her to be removed from the board, I would need to send her a letter. And so I'm basically asking um, the approval from the board to send the letter regarding her removal, because she needs a ten-day notice. And she does have the option of speaking, you know, her side. And then um, also the commissioner's approval to post this opening on our website for the vacant position to be filled at the May Commission Meeting.
Other discussion on that?
So if you can't get ahold of her, of what meetings, how are you gonna get ahold of her to tell her she's not there?
Well, alls I can do is, is send a, send a letter for what I have and, and that'll have to be sufficient to, to follow.
So are, are ways of getting ahold of her, we've done our due diligence, we've left voicemails, you've sent a letter, got returned back?
No, so it was Derek Johnson who is from, is the executive director. Um, he has been trying to get in contact with her so that she could participate in the board, and he can't get any contact with her. And so I'm looking for mi- permission because the Stark County Commission put her on the board. And we need to remove her. And so in order for that to happen, I have to send her a, a letter or notice.
Do, do we have documentation of the email that was undeliverable? That came back as undeliverable? And the voicemails or phone calls, the dates and times?
He just said that that's what was, Bernie, you're on that board, do you have any thoughts on that?
Basically it, he just, I mean, I didn't ask for any documentation, he just said he's trying to get ahold of her.
I think I'd like to see where we've, we've made our, our due diligence, good faith effort to reach out to her, even though she, she has not attended. Uh, so that uh, we have that documentation.
That's what I think she's requesting.
Even if we sign, send a certified mail to her and it comes back undeliverable, or?
We're asking to send a letter to her to ask for moving from the board and, you know, and, and sending a letter to her and then for response if she needs to. And then also we want to post that if she does not.
If she's got, she, if she makes, she wants to, how long she can respond.
She has the ability, it's specific, she has the ability to appeal the decision. It's the recommendation of the Housing Authority Board for non-participation, it's not unusual that that happens. So um, I would move that Stark County uh, Commission send the notice to Terica Holmes uh, regarding a, a letter of removal from the Stark County Housing Authority Board per the recommendation of the Stark County Housing Authority Board.
A second.
Motion is second, any other discussion? All in favor, state aye. Those opposed, motion carry. Next, we'll recess for break here, and then I think we'll go into the Park Board meeting at ten fifteen, so the recess for now.
I think. Oh, yeah. What was I thinking?
All right, if everybody's ready to go, Lisa Heizer, the Recording Secretary, calling the April sixth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Stark County Park Board to order. And I'd like on first business to ask if there are any objections to appointing Bernie Marsh as chairman pro tempore for this meeting. Any objections? Hearing none. Bernie, you are now chairman.
All right, um, okay, well, the meetings has already been called to order. Um, do we need to do a roll call? Okay, Paul Claris. Dean Franchik. Myself, Neil Messer. Randy Schwartz. Not here. Jason Vaz. Not here.
Here.
Oh, he is here? Okay, Corey White.
Present.
All right, we also have invited Amanda Engelstedt, which is not here, and Lisa Heizer, which is here. So it looks like, do we need to, um, ratify anything for the, um, agenda? If not, then I'll take a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So move.
You have a first, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All right, all those opposed, same sign. Do we go into the, oh, that's at ten thirty, so we have time there yet. All right, minutes of the last meeting. Probably haven't had time to take a look at it, so I'll give you a minute or two. Look at it.
I'll make a motion to approve the March seventh, two thousand twenty-three Park Board minutes.
We have a motion to accept the minutes of March seventh. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in, um, in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved. Uh, then we move on to old business. What's that? There's no old business. And then we'll move on to new business. Is there any new business other than the bid opening, which is at ten thirty? Oh, okay.
Before we do open those, though, um, I would like to thank Two's Construction, Roar's Construction and Coaling and Coaling for putting their best foot forward to give us bids on the restrooms and just the help that they've given us through the entire process in looking for things that were more local, um, than our architects and engineering companies had put forward, in saving us significant costs. So, thank you guys.
You have a bid putting forward?
All right, well, then we'll move into the bid opening. And, um, start out by opening the security envelope. First one we have here is Two's Construction. Looks like that's all in order. Do we open all those first, then we go to the bids or do we just? Well, what kind of fancy thing did you get me here? Okay, the bid from Two's Construction. Eight hundred ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-nine dollars. That was eight ninety-nine, eight ninety-nine.
Eight ninety-nine, eight ninety-nine.
The next one here is Roar's Construction. All right. Roar's Construction bid. Eight ninety-one, six eighty. What's this on here? Oh, that's written in, okay. Now we have Coaling and Coaling. This bid comes out at nine hundred ninety-six thousand dollars. Even? Yes. This one what? I can't open this one? Okay.
Uh, just so everybody's aware, the, the three bids that were received earlier, were checked previously for the acknowledgement of addenda one, two, and three. And these envelopes here received from, yes, Electric does not acknowledge any of that. So we cannot open those bids.
Just a quick question on that, Lisa?
Yes.
Uh, so the three bids you have are generals. I'm, I'm assuming, I don't, you know, the other bid that we did not open. I didn't see the, the bid form when you say the acknowledgement of the addendums, I, uh...
North Dakota Century Code says that they have to be on the outside of the envelope, that they have to be acknowledged that way, and that's how it was in the ad for bid as well. But that is North Dakota Century Code.
Okay. We'll, we'll probably want to verify that. I, I trust what you're saying. I just want to verify that too as well. Okay, no problem.
Okay, those are our three bids. Anybody got any questions on those? Lowest bid is eight ninety-one, six eighty.
So, um...
I, I... Go ahead, Jason. Can I ask you a question? This is Jason.
Yes, ask, ask your question.
Okay, so this is for restrooms at the fairground.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Is that, and then we're voting to spend over three quarters of a million dollars on that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Just a couple of questions.
Is there, is there a way that that restrooms is going to generate those funds back to the Park Board or to?
Likely not, just because we don't rent them out. They come with the facility rental, so, um, and we do lease that facility to the Fair Association, so their rental costs would include that.
Is there an engineer's estimate?
Their rental costs would include bathrooms?
Yes, because when they rent the facility, that would be included in the facility as it is, you know, when they rent. Right now, we just have the, the two handicapped ones.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm a little bit out of the loop because when we first started talking about restrooms, we were talking about restrooms that the COVID policy was going to give us two hundred fifty thousand for, and we were going to build restrooms then.
Yes, we...
Now we get bids for three times that amount and we're going to probably be coming up with over five, well over five hundred thousand dollars outside of the COVID money to build restrooms that you will never see that money again when there's buildings and other things that need for, for the ag buildings and things like that. So how far out of the loop am I in?
You're, you're exactly correct. We... You're exactly correct. We had received 230,000 of ARPA funding for these restrooms. That was two years ago. And then, of course, we all know what happened to building costs and estimates and that. We do not have an engineer's estimate, because we had an architect that drew these and worked on that themselves.
So, did the architect have a budget? Or didn't, or, you know, and I guess the reason...
We had contracts with the architects. Is that what you're asking?
No, not for their services, but for what they felt the project would be. And the reason I ask that question is, you know, based on the size of the facility, if he was given a, or she was given a price range so that they could design a facility that they felt might come into the range, because obviously, I think everybody here is probably surprised at the number on the bids.
Right.
And so, that's my question.
They knew that what we had had for ARPA funding, they knew that, but nothing else. We actually, they designed specifically to match one of the other buildings that was out there, and we quickly said, no, we don't need something like that. We need a simple building layout, which you guys have in front of you. And we actually cut most of the restrooms, because right now, it has eight urinals in the men's and then six stalls. And in the women's, it's got 13 stalls. And that was the very minimum that we could do on that facility to be able to make it work.
And that kind of derived from the number of portables you put out at your big events, right?
The attendance of the facility during spectator events, that's what the number... The number was double that, and we said, well, we'll just supplement with porta potties at that point.
Okay. So, I think the inevitable question.
So, you're still... Sorry, Dean. Go ahead, sir.
No, go ahead, Josh. I'm here. I can ask a question anytime.
So, I... I'm just... So, you can still, you're still allowed to facilitate the extra capacity with rental porta potties?
Yes.
Yes.
So, if we have a huge crowd and we need more porta potties, we're allowed to facilitate them with porta potties like we're doing now, correct?
Correct, and that is correct. We just have a lot of people that have communicated to the commissioners over the last five years about that they won't attend events out there, because it is porta potties. It's unsafe for children to be out there and potentially playing in those and falling into those. And that was why. And there's not room for parents with smaller children to fit in those. I typically rent the handicapped one, but it's one. And so, that one, they can get in and get out of, you know, fairly easily with those. But again, it's one, and that's all that they will provide to us for, at this point.
Right, and we have one right now, correct? We have a regular potty, a bathroom, right now.
Technically, we're not supposed to use that one. Yes, we have a men's and a women's on the south side, one bathroom stall. But we're technically not supposed to have regular people use it. That's for the handicap accessible. So, what we run into is when we have events, there's a line of non-handicapped, non-challenged people that don't get to... They're in line, and they're waiting, and they use it. But then the person that comes up that actually does need that with wheelchair or walking issues or whatever, they have to stand in line behind them. And that's been the major issue that we've had throughout the five years I've been here.
So...
And there's no other way around it except spend 800,000 dollars on a restroom.
And this is brick and metal, right? Is it block and metal?
Yes.
So, it can also be used as a shelter in place, location out there at fairgrounds if there's a storm or...
I don't know if it's rated on that. I see, yeah, I see the rating.
tornado warning or...
Yeah, the rating was... I can't remember what the wall wind rating was, but that's kind of secondary. But I think what the discussion should be is, I think everyone feels that the bid numbers were higher than they anticipated. I don't know what protocol is, what the process is to try to... I mean, the wishes could be, we take the low bid and run. I mean, that's certainly an option. But if the wishes are that we try to figure out a way of doing this facility at less money, that would be kind of the route I would like to go.
I agree.
Because, I mean, if you look at what we say we have available in funds, it's 1,381,000. That means we're going to use, you know, 80% of our funds on the single project. So, I don't know how we do it. Maybe, Lisa, you know, you've been involved in this. But I would like to see us figure out how to have conversations to still get a project that function and meets the needs, but at less money. And I have ideas, looked at the plans. I have ideas, but I don't know if it's proper to do that, so.
And I think everybody can agree, a restroom is, that location out there, there's been discussions of putting other infrastructure out there as well, right, in the future? Kick the can down the road, five more years, it could be 1.2 million dollars for restrooms.
My recommendation to this board would be to hold these bids and enter into some conversations to see if there's some things that we could potentially change order through getting it down, because we did not expect this to be this high.
So, would it be proper and legal for us to say, hold the bids, have independent conversations with each of the three bidders, maybe the fourth one? I don't know. But at least the three bidders and have conversations on how we can do this project and get the costs down? Is that appropriate? I don't know if it is or not.
I think it is.
It is.
Okay. I would, because your construction timetable on this is to have it completed by freeze-up.
September 15th was the completion date.
Okay. And everybody thought they could meet that date, obviously.
Yes, that bid it, yes.
Okay. So, maybe we have these conversations sooner rather than later, and then figure out how to move forward.
Is that a motion?
Sure, I would, yeah. You got what I said?
Okay, I couldn't hear the motion. Can you repeat that into the microphone, please?
Yeah, so my motion, Josh, would be to hold the three approved or eligible bids, enter into independent conversations with each of the bidders, and have a dialogue on to how we potentially could do this project at less money, and then bring it back to the board.
Because, yeah, there's nothing that says we have to accept a bid, any of the bids.
Correct.
So, at that rate, does it stay with these three, or do we open up bids again?
That's what I was asking. I don't know the legality of that. That was supposed between... That would happen.
Can you come to the mic? So, we have it.
I was actually reading about the bidding.
Who did?
This is Karen Richard. I was actually reading about bidding in the Century Code the other day, because I was looking at some stuff for Road. And you can choose not to accept the bids, but as presented, but I'm pretty sure that you have to re-advertise, send out for it, and get new bids if you are changing anything.
It's a percentage of the change that you make that would be that way.
Commissioner, may I make comment? I think by, I'm not an attorney, but I think we got the right to hold a bid for 30 days.
We do.
Okay.
And then I think we can decide what to do.
If you go back to the three, and everybody says, no, this is the best product, best price, da-da-da-da-da, potentially, you could come back within the 30 days and accept one of the bids, or the low bid. Is it the low bid or the best bid?
We can choose. Whatever's in the best interest of the county is the way we advertised it.
Jeremy's back there. He knows the rules. Okay, so, that's my motion. And I would happily be part of those conversations. I don't need to be, but I would certainly be part of those conversations.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Are we actually tabling these three bids, and is that your motion?
I'm saying we hold or table, whatever the correct term is. And then we have conversations with each of the three...
For what period of time?
I'd say two weeks at the most.
Okay, we're ready for the next meeting.
Okay. How much lead time you have to have on a bid?
It has to advertise for three weeks.
Okay, so we probably...
So, 21 days advertising before it's bid.
Okay, well, we could still have a special meeting if that...
Yes, correct.
Got it.
Okay, is there a second? Second. Is there any other discussion? I don't know if the discussion would come here or where, but depending what the bids come in, I mean, we must have to have an idea of what we want to spend. I mean, does that discussion come now, or does it come after the next bids are in, or...
Yeah, let's pass this and then have that discussion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any more discussion? And this can be, doesn't have to be roll call bid, or does it?
I would say, let's do it.
Okay, I gotta see what's all here.
I got a quick question, Bernie.
Yes, sir.
When we gave, when we gave these guys the scope of work, is that, is that something everybody decided on? Hey, we need bathrooms? How was that ever brought up, and was there a budget on that at the time?
Well, there never really was a budget. I mean, it got brought up to us as, at the county, and we would set aside 250,000 dollars or whatever it was for it.
230,000.
230, whatever it was. And...
Yeah, the motion was to engage the architect into developing a plan, and this was approved by you guys a while ago to develop it and try to get that, within that scope of that dollars.
And when you guys had this last discussion, how many years ago was that?
When you said you voted on it and voted yes on it, I don't, I don't remember ever voting yes on just a non-budget, like bathrooms with not a budget.
We didn't have a budget. And I guess we were just waiting to see what the bids came in at, and we're just all surprised. So, I mean, a little bit of hindsight, or however you want to look at it. But we have to go forward from here, so wherever we, however we got here is we're here now, and we just have to go forward.
Well, also, if you, if, in a typical process, if you want a budget range, that the engineer or the architect's going to cost, going to charge you to develop that. So, I don't know how much we would have saved, we saved by doing that, but it was, our fees were less to get to this point now, but...
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Let's take a roll call vote. Paul?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Randy?
Not here.
Jason?
I really don't know what I'm voting on, other than are we kicking the can down the road for 30 days? And are we going to discuss it, or are we going to show up to the next meeting and say, hey, what do we think?
Well, basically, we want to have new...
Been here not knowing what I'm voting on.
The motion, as I have it, is that we are holding these bids for two weeks and discussing with the three bidders that we opened to talk about decreasing the costs and then come up with a plan on how to move forward, whether we do it by special meeting or at the next meeting after that.
Okay, so I, I'm voting no. I don't, I would rather look at a budget and an actual plan of what's needed than give construction guys free rein to come up with their own ideas and bid accordingly.
All right, Jason is a nay. Corey?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so the motion, as you just presented it, is passed. And now we're going to move on into trying to set up a budget for this?
A meeting for, to talk about that.
Well, I think we can talk the money right now. So, I think, Lisa, to just go back, if I may, Bernie, real quick, is, so, Lisa, if you want to coordinate some of these, and, you know, maybe we should have, I guess we can only have two of us involved, maybe...
We can have more. There's eight people on this board.
Oh, okay.
So, we can have...
So, and I know Frandy's back. He probably would take, sounds like Jason has an interest in it. You know, and I think part of my future discussion is going to be the fair board. It sounds like they need to be a player in this, so maybe, well, one of those individuals or their chairman could participate it in as well. But I would say sooner rather than later, let's get these meetings set up and see what kind of recommendations we can bring back. It might be nothing, but let's at least try.
Okay, I'll set that up.
Okay, so now we can talk money.
So, now, that's a motion to set up this committee?
Well, I think that's just the directive of the motion.
All right, so we'll let Lisa take care of that, and now we'll talk about what kind of budget that we feel we can justify for this. I mean, we have 230,000 dollars right now.
It's a little bit less than 230, because we did the architectural and engineering in there.
And when we did that, I thought that was quite generous. You know, and we're looking at some of our other projects that we're looking at, you know? You know, we're looking at, you know, looking at taking up almost a million dollars out of it, half a million dollars out of those other projects.
According to the data that Lisa just gave us, we have available four projects, 1,381,000, so we're going to use up...
Almost half it.
Well, no, we're going to use like 80% of that. That includes the two...
I was looking at our new budget that we're working on.
Okay, that includes the 230.
Yes, that includes the 230. That's in, that 230 is in that.
Yes.
In that dollar amount.
Yes.
And you always have to have some contingency in there.
Yeah.
Is it really going to be built for 896?
Right.
You know? Or 891?
So, you could be looking at a million dollars by those original bids.
Yep.
Especially for a government project.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any suggestions from anybody here?
I guess I would ask the question, so I see the budget.
I got, I would like to suggest that the money that we got from the government, the 230,000 and whatever we have left, that that's our budget for bathrooms. Whether, anything else we need, we rent. And if we need to have somebody stand at the gate, 500,000 dollars would go a lot in labor for each event for the next 25 years. So, if we need to have somebody standing at the door at the restroom to make sure only handicapped people are allowed to go in, you can do that. 210,000 dollars for your restrooms, and if we need to rent, we can rent. I make a motion. That's what I make a motion for.
All right, we have a motion.
But that's our budget, 210,000, whatever.
We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second? Do we have a second to this motion? Do we have a second to the motion that's on the table right now? Yeah, at this point, the motion fails. We'll continue with discussion.
Lisa, I guess I would ask, you know, we obviously have a finite amount of money here, the 1.3 million.
Will you turn on your mic so that, that's okay?
We have a finite amount of money here at 1.3 million dollars, too, for all your projects, right? Basically, at this point.
At this point, yes.
And we have prioritized our projects. I mean, is this number one in the priority? I mean, how many projects are there? I mean, what do you forecast, you know, how we go about this?
When we phased in these projects, this is, this is phase two. Phase one was leveling of the hill, which we got the contractors to donate to do. So, we saved 1.3 million there. Then this was phase two, because it was just an item that they did not go forward with and build, and it causes a lot of issues for people that want to attend events, but... an item that they did not go forward with and build, and it causes a lot of issues for people that want to attend events but don't want to go in a porta potty. So, um, not everybody likes that. A lot of people are city people, so they're not the rodeo people like Jason or anybody that maybe would have that issue. Phase three was the building, the indoor, um, events building and community building there, and then phase four was the, um, shooting range, dog park.
Okay.
That was phase four.
So this park board has, uh, these funds available. This is basically first priority at this point.
Yes, the next priority, yes.
You're not, you don't have any plans, and we're not going forward with anything else until we get a bathroom. It's kind of the plan, the way it sounds.
So now, just to not interrupt you, but I will interrupt you. The one point three million that we have right now is the money that we designated to match what the guys did to tear, level the hill. Is that where you got that from?
No, they actually did not choose to do any match for that. Um, the, the million dollars came into play because the park board had two CDs when we came into the general fund, and that was allocated. Um, and then they just didn't renew them, knowing we were doing some of these projects, so they put it into that special projects fund.
So they're parked there, that's where they're gonna stay, so.
Yes, correct.
Okay, you know, park board, where's the fair board on this? Do they have funds available for projects like this?
No.
Actually, Commissioner Clarice, I actually had some thoughts on that. I was wondering if, because I know, I know us three are definitely on the fair board. If maybe, based on the financials, if maybe we could ask the other fair board members if they would want to contribute maybe fifty thousand dollars? The fair board doesn't have a lot of money, but, um, since it is a facility that we are renting, using, and we could really use the bathroom facility, um, we could probably contribute something.
Okay.
And so, and I would be willing to, you know, put that on the agenda for a discussion.
So to further that, so, I mean, where are all the players? Okay, we've got the fair board, we've got the park board. What other players are potentially, I mean, sources of, of funding here? Because like I said, I'd hate to see decimate your fund. You've got the one point three million dollars, and you just hate to see that get decimated with just bathrooms. You've got other plans and other things going down the road that you'd want to have some money for, and it's not growing, you know, at this point, so what other players possibly are out there that, you know, could be a part of this project? You know, like I said, I, we, we just had come from a, a collaboration meeting with the city of Dickinson. There's a lot of players at the table, and there's, you know, a lot of people that are gonna benefit, are gonna benefit from that facility, period. Uh, the, uh, so I, like I said, I wonder if there's a possibility to, you know, get some, uh, buy-in from other people on this project. I mean, I still hate to see us spend a million dollars on a bathroom, but, um, but, uh, and I go, and I, and I agree with Jason. I guess maybe I would have probably approached this initially as, hey, show me what you can build for two hundred and thirty thousand, and we can scale it from there, you know, type thing, which, which had probably been, I don't know, Tin Shack out on the side of the hill. I'm not quite sure what it would have been, but, you know, maybe start there, but this is obviously pretty shocking. I guess that's all I have. I just, I, I, I think we should look for some buy-in from some other entities here potentially and get everybody's thoughts and. Because it's a need, there's no doubt about it. Let's get out of the bush league here and have some nice new bathrooms, but, you know. Well, and the comment was made is if, if, if you're not gonna have people go out there because of the restroom facilities, then that, that's not the image we want as well. But, you know, you, the, any of us who have gone to multi, you know, you go to the state fair, you go here or there, it's, it's a hybrid of, of interior, exterior. I asked Lisa the question the other day, or this morning earlier, was be, how many full capacity events do we have out there currently? That would, you know, take the full one, well, we're probably single digits on that, but if you get some other facilities out there, it's obviously gonna go up. Do you want to look at doing a bathroom that's, or restroom that's expandable somewhere down the road? I don't think that's the route I would choose to go. But I have ideas, but, so I agree. I think I'm in shock, uh, but I'd like to figure out a solution.
Chairman, if I may suggest, I like to suggest things. Let's not flush this project, number one. But I think that we, we should take a look what our options are before we try and put a budget number together. Let's see what it, what it take maybe to eliminate some of the brick, maybe eliminate some of the other things like Mr. Messer said, a different roof system. And I think it's hard for us to, or for you people to put a number together today when, I think we need to research our avenues and then come to whenever you have your meeting, what's a different solution.
Well, I think today's gonna make everybody think, which is good, so I'm, I'm all for that.
As well as the, um, bidders.
Yeah. And, and the bidders are, you know, their hands are tied a bit here. This is what was laid out in front of them. They know, they know the costs, I mean, so it was probably.
Pretty comparable.
Yeah, the, the, you know, obviously, this, the plan was maybe a little ambitious, um, I mean, but, um, I, all three of those bids were pretty, pretty close.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
So no one was too far off the, the mark here, so.
Okay, well then, so then what are we gonna, just sit down and make this discussion happen with these contractors, come back and see?
Yep.
Where we can go from there?
Yep.
So that would be the plan at this, at this point?
Yep.
All right, well, I guess we don't need a motion for that, because that's already in place.
We, this, Bernie, can I, can I ask this, this, this little discussion here was about a budget. Am I, was I correct?
Correct.
Okay, so can we set a budget and see what they come up with, like, like Commissioner proposed?
I, I think we're tying our hands if we do that. I, I think, uh, the experts in the room are gonna be the three contractors we're sitting down with, and that'll be part of that discussion. So if we go into them and just pick a number, whatever number you want, and say, what, what can you do for X amount of dollars? I don't think you're gonna get their full input. I think, uh, if you go into the room and say, hey, we're over budget, we need to cut, cut a bunch of costs out of this, what's your rec, professional recommendation? I think that dialogue is, uh, is a much better path to, uh, to, to success here, so.
I would agree.
We're not closing any doors that way, where the doors are all open.
Yeah.
Exactly.
But, and we have to do our due diligence too, and not costing a bunch of extra CAD design work, um, because we're already, you know, thirty thousand dollars into this design work, and so we want to make sure that when we come back, we have what we want, not just what the architect wants.
When we get our information from the architects, and we, from the contractors, we go back to architects.
That would make more sense.
And see where we, kind of then, and then I'll, then you can only come back for the bidding because you go to point eight, you visit, their ideas on how to cut back, we go to the architects to draw it up, then we gotta go back to the bidding again.
Right.
So, anyway, I guess that's the plan. Any other new business? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Stark County Park Board meeting from today. Make a motion to close the meeting.
Second it.
Do we got a second? All right, meeting adjourned. Next regular meeting is May second.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Things all ready? Next item then, we have an agenda is, uh, two thousand twenty-two audit firm selection.
So, um, I reached out. We've been using the state auditors for many years, and, um, I've reached out just to see what we'd be looking at if we switched to a different auditing firm. The one that was large enough to kind of take on Stark County or be interested in Stark County, um, was I'd Bailey. And I'd Bailey, these, in your packets, you have, um, the letters, like, uh, letters that tell you, you know, their engagement letters from both the state auditors and I'd Bailey. My, when working with the state auditors, um, there, there was a lot of, we did have a lot of challenges, especially in the last year, we had some issues. They had issues with staff turnover, and not having enough senior staff at that time to deal with Stark County, because initially, our two thousand twenty-one audit actually took a full year, um, which surprised me. We also had a single audit that had to be done as well for ARPA funding, because we spent over the threshold for ARPA funding. I had some conversations with the state auditor's office, and if you look at the prices, um, you know, we are looking at quite a significant, um, almost twice the cost to go with I'd Bailey. Um, the state auditors for our non, you know, services, our audit, our single audit, our, um, job development authority, and our, um, water. We're looking from, you know, twenty-nine thousand to thirty-four thousand is, is kind of their range. And then, um, from I'd Bailey, based on the information they sent me over. And I, they know the size of Stark County. I did, you know, give them that kind of information. Initially, they said that they would probably be about twenty-five, um, percent, you know, probably up to twenty-five percent higher than the state auditors, but based on what they sent over, we're more in the fifty to sixty thousand dollar range for the audit, and then, um, up to ten thousand dollars for the single audit. So I, I would say at least sixty, and so it is almost twice the cost than what the state auditors would be. The conversation that I had with the state auditor's office at a couple different levels, because, you know, they to, they knew that we were unhappy about some of the things that went on in our audit this year. We had to send information numerous times. They, um, there was just, it, I told them not to put us during election time for auditing purposes, and of course, it landed the week before the election when they wanted more auditing stuff. I spoke to Heath also, and they said that basically they would like another chance to do Stark County's audit. We've been with them for many years, and they would like a chance to fix the issues that we had in this two thousand twenty-one audit, and they seemed pretty sincere in that. I'd Bailey is just your guys, you know, it's another option. I know they're a great company. A lot of other counties also use I'd Bailey, um, that don't use the state auditor. They use I'd Bailey for the larger ones, it seems like. And it's just what you want to do cost-wise and where you're thinking you want to go forward, because ideally, we don't want to bounce back and forth every year, so if, if we chose, if the commission chose to switch to I'd Bailey, then you're kind of making that decision for the following year too, because we spend more for them to get established into our system. They have to, you know, go through all the paperwork. It costs way less when they've already done Stark County before, because they already understand our system and practices, so.
So you would like us to, uh, make a decision on which direction to go so that you can engage for the two thousand twenty-two audit? Okay. Um, I do have a couple of questions. Um, did you, are, are these the only two you talked to, I'd Bailey and the state auditor, to request, uh, an option?
Yes, I just wanted
Okay.
Another option other than the state auditors.
Okay, so, and the reason I bring that up, Karen, is, um, uh, Brady March does the Dickinson public school system. That's a, and I don't know if they'd be interested or not. A lot of the independent CPA firms don't want municipal audits because it's not a big portion, and you have to have a specialty to kind of negotiate, navigate through that, but, you know, the public school budget is seven, eight, ten times what ours is, and the cost of their budget is significantly less than the, uh, number we're looking at, even with the auditor being, the state auditor's office being the low number. And, uh, so I would, you know, I'm not ready to give a decision on this today. I would certainly want to engage that. I believe there's an independent firm out of, a smaller community around here as well, who all meet the criteria that state auditor requires to, uh, accept the audit, because you can have an audit done, and the state auditor, uh, won't necessarily, uh, accept that audit, right? Because it's, there's a certain criteria qualifications that you need to do, so, um, I'd like to see us reach out to Brady March. They are local, and they are doing other, um, political subdivision audits.
I did, I did actually, um, was it last year? I have had conversation with Brady March, and at that time, they didn't have the staffing to take on Stark County, which was what the conversations were. It's not that, um, you know, and, and that was after the twenty, I would say that would have been before this audit, so it would have been like the, the timeframe of twenty twenty-one, I would have spoke to them, and they just didn't seem interested in taking on Stark County at that time. Um, here is where we're running into it, is like I'd Bailey, for example, they do their audits. Basically, I need a decision here sooner than later because we need to get into our auditing process.
So.
They do theirs in the summer. Both, both the state auditors and I'd Bailey want to schedule us in a slot, and they won't schedule us in, in a slot until we determine who we're going with, and they both audit their political subdivisions in the summertime.
So the state, sorry about that. The state has reached out to us, apologized to us, this is what you said, and they'd like another opportunity. Significantly less in cost. Uh, there's, you brought up, uh, Brady March, and then I, I don't think we'd have a problem if we stayed another year with the state.
I, I would personally, after having the conversations with Heath and having the conversations with Brian, that I worked with the state office. Um, I know Dean was in on those conversations as well, um, especially with Brian. I would be open to giving the state auditors another chance for another year, um, based on the huge price difference too, and, um, see if, if they can, they can get us there and perform, and I would also, you know, as long as they're willing to give us somebody who has, um, done Stark County before. Brian, who did our audit this year, he kind of, you know, we did have some hiccups, but now he understands kind of how our inter-fund accounting, what have you, works. And so I, I guess I'm open to staying with the state if they are willing to give us basically the same auditor, because he already has an understanding of how our inter-fund works, and, and save the money and give him another shot, is where I'm at.
Well, and I, and I'm, I'm potentially okay with that. So here's the issue that I have, is we have no guarantees. Brian himself told us he, he operates out of Fargo, and so he would be, uh, relegating some of the in, in-office visits to Bismarck staff. If Brian finds a greater opportunity, then you potentially have a different auditor, and if you go back twelve and twenty-four months on some of these other audits we received, I don't know how much people have followed, um, this topic of the state auditor, but, uh, there's probably five or seven other counties who would strongly disagree with this. You go to Grex County, Nelson County, there's some other counties of, and, you know, some of the issues that get brought up in our audit, they, they formally make a, a opinion, and then they say, as well, it's not really a, a formal deficiency, we just want to make sure we have conversations with you about certain issues. And so, and number one, and then number two, when they do find a deficiency, they send out a notice that says this deficiency is confidential. Well, if this is a public entity, the deficiency should be, should be public. We should be able to discuss it, whatever, and so, um, those are the issues I. And so, um, those are the issues I have. Unfortunately, we've weaponized the state auditor's office greatly, unfortunately. And, uh, there's a whole litany of political subdivisions. You go to Kildare Ambulance, Grant, uh, the, uh, a couple of fire department. There's a whole litany of where people have had real issues. Uh, the Department of Commerce, the Sarah Coleman had to pay $8,000 out of her own pocket to defend, uh, what happened with the state auditor. And then there was absolutely no problems found. So, um, that's the issues I have. It's not that you don't have competent people doing the audits. It's not that it's good inform- uh, not good information. It's very educational, those kinds of things. But I think we have to have an understanding that everybody needs to play in this. And it's not a one-way street when it comes to the rules of the audit. That, that's where I'm at Karen and, and
So I, I will actually touch a little bit on the other part that you said about, you know, I understand that there has been some, a lot of turmoil with the state auditor. And, um, something that I did find interesting with that is if we do go with, let's say, a private CPA firm and the state auditor, uh, this auditor office chooses, um, that something's wrong with it. We could wind up in a position like one of the current school districts that is being audited for, Lana, what did they say? Eight years, re-audited for eight years. Because the person that did their books and they had already, um, thrown away stuff that they shouldn't have. And so my concern is, is if we go with an individual business and they're going to be, no matter what, every, we're a larger political subdivision, they're going to keep an eye on us. Are we going to be ones that are going to be constantly polled? And then have to pay for the state auditors to re-audit us? That's where some of my concerns.
If you're referencing Williston School District, that was incompetence, uh, on their part.
I'm not talking about Williston.
Okay, well, that, that's the one I was mostly aware of. I'm more interested in the situation like Partial, the city of Partial. Uh, those kinds of things where they went in and did an audit and just doing an audit and building a base from the previous 12 months. They go back four years and, and build the base and, uh, do an audit that typically was eight to $11,000. They bill out at $48,000. That's what I'm concerned about. And so, yes, we have a good relationship with Heath and Brian. I agree with that. And if we could continue that at, at the current rate, I'm fine with that. But the problem is, is a lot of subdivisions, a lot of, uh, counties have, have kind of had their ears raised because of some of the actions that have, that have taken place. That's what I want to make sure we're fully aware of when we do this. So, um, you know, and then you can't come and, and get into the, the point I brought in easier or earlier was you can't come and then offer a discount because you want to have the people stop complaining. That's happened in five, five of the political subdivisions. The ones that raised their, their voices the loudest, all of a sudden they get a letter that they're offered a discount, uh, on their audit fees. Why is that? So, um, I'm just throwing it out there for discussion. I, I think we should, uh, at least
Their audit fees from the state?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so they get a bill for 48,000. They raise, uh, all kinds of cane and, and complain, go to the legislature and testify. And all of a sudden they get a la- a letter and say, ooh, we'll offer you a $4,000 discount on your, on your audit fee. So I, I, I would be fine with where we are. I'm not in, interested in a $60,000 bill. I am interested in listening to Brady March if they are interested in, in doing us. And if that's not the case, then I would be fine revisiting this. But I would definitely specify that we, uh, re-engage and request Brian as our lead auditor. So.
Any other discussion? Yes, we have the option then either approving one of these forms or tabling it. So we do further disresearch.
Well, if you table this, is it going to put the summer audit in jeopardy? Since the audit we just finished was finished in the middle of winter?
It wasn't supposed to be that way.
There's a good chance of that, I guess.
Yeah.
Well, here in a few weeks, we'll be in period five of 2023. So I mean, it's the year almost half over pretty quick.
Yeah, they just, if, you know, I, I'm guessing that we're not going with IBALEI because of their cost. Um, but I will say that we will need to get on some sort of calendar time. I would like, I know I, when I spoke to the state auditor's office, they did say that they were open to sending people. They're getting more people out in the field this year. Cause I know that, you know, our last two audits, we had to send everything electronically. Well, then somebody receives something electronically and they don't know where it went. Or, um, we just did have a big issue with that. But, um, this year they are willing to have, you know, have the staff come down here to our office. And we were going to set up, you know, a computer or what have you in the back room. So they can run reports and, um, and be here for, you know, a chunk of the audit. Um, and that is something that I, I prefer. So.
Any other discussion? I guess my discussions with the auditor involved in that too. They already, it's only, they're pretty willing to work with us. I know they, they say, was, admit to some of these situations and they're willing to, you know, work with it and work it out. I look for a motion then as to what we want to do with this situation.
Look for a motion to utilize the state for one more year. Invite, uh, Brady March, uh, into the conversation at some point. And, uh, see if, uh, next year if we don't, excuse me, see the results that we like. I mean, we have an opportunity to move on.
Okay, I have a motion, then do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a second, any other discussion? See another discussion, roll call vote, then Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Clarice. Commissioner Messer?
No.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Anything else on the agenda that we missed or, I think I got everything there. Not then, uh, sorry, thought you had something.
Chair.
Yes.
Um, Neil was going to discuss that chat.
Yeah, the bill, the one bill.
Yeah. Just as a, just sorry Carla. Uh, just as a follow-up. So I wanted to bring up, so we, we engaged them. We signed the engagement letter and the engagement letter to the state auditor doesn't specify fees and it doesn't specify, uh, specify a per hour fee. It says, we're going to do the audit and we're going to bill you. And so, uh, in light that some other institutions and political subs are getting discounts, do we want to pay the bill or ask for a discount? That's, that's the only reason I'm asking, asking for it. So.
Now Neil, um, normally, you know, I was pretty surprised because I, I felt like the state auditor himself made it sound like, um, this political subdivision auditing portion is also funded out of the general fund. Um, not, and I was quite taken aback by that. Well, I, um, got some further research into that. And yes, uh, the majority of his auditors that are under him are funded by the general fund, but not the one for political subdivisions, which is the auditor staff that we use. They are funded by the audits themselves. So, um, these discounts that are going to be given are taken off of their budget. It's not coming from the state, um, general fund budgeting. It's coming from potentially the staff, you know, as far as not having those funds available to hire more people or what have you. I mean, I thought that there was a big difference in that. Um, because when he made the comment about, you know, raising his, his, um, budget to the, I think it was what, 21 million dollars, what have you. Um, that a re- immediately raised flags for me that if, if the state auditor, um, this political subdivision auditing fund, uh, firm is being paid for by the state general fund, then why, why are the, you know, fees the way they are? And so I was immediately taken back by that. Well, then I called the state auditor's office and I spoke to Brian. And I've spoke to Heath and I said, this is the way it's being made to sound. And he said, well, he shouldn't have grouped us in with all of his audit, auditors, um, that he hires because we are funded from the fees and amounts we collect from the audits they do, is what he said. Which is what my initial understanding was.
Well, the budget as proposed for his office, and I, I thank you for the, the detailed breakdown. The budget from his office is he's requested 21 million. Uh, right now, when we write a check, we don't write it to the state auditor. You write it to the state general fund. Basically that's where it gets deposited. But there is a, there is a mechanism that allows that money to flow through, you're right. But I believe, and I, I don't have it right in front of me, I was looking for it. Um, I believe there is in the amount of three, four million that actually, uh, makes that part up. So technically it probably goes through the state general fund. But yeah, um, the audits are, are only an offset, uh, of the overall picture. Yeah. So. Okay, that's, I'm fine with that. Oh, so are we talking about the bill?
Yeah.
So I, I just want to do what, what the wishes are. I mean, if
I think we should add, if there's a chance you get a discount, we should ask for a discount.
I agree.
And I don't know what the procedure is. I just know that there was five discounts given. So, um, you know, we may ask for it. Ask for just a simple, nice little letter says upon further consideration, we'd ask you to give us consideration of discounts. Since the audit went from X amount of dollars to almost 35,000. So.
Well, I will say that a part of the overall, you know, I'm not justifying what their rates are, but part of that was the single audit done for the ARPA funding, which is something that we had to have done by the feds, you know, to meet the federal guidelines. So if you took out that portion of the audit, um, that audit portion alone was, gosh, I want to say, was it three to 5,000?
But you ended up sending that information over there two or three times.
Yeah, I know.
And so we're, we're getting billed every ti- individual time that you sent an email and it goes from auditor A to auditor B to auditor C at $115 an hour. Every time that happens, the meter keeps clicking. So that, that's
But they put way less hours into this audit than they did the previous year. Quite significantly less hours.
And then, and the bill was higher.
Whatever the commission wants to do.
I just want people to be aware of
Don't hurt the house, get going if you see one.
We need a motion for that or just a suggestion that we ask for a discount?
I'd look for a motion, I think.
I'll make a motion that we ask them for a discount.
I'll second it.
Motion to second, other discussion. Roll call vote then, Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Clarice.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay, now I think we're ready.
Hi Carla Harth, I'm Stark County resident. Thank you for having me. Um, I'm going to go just back a little bit. It took me a little bit to get some public record because there wasn't a lot. Um, I was a little bit surprised when I had heard about the planning and zoning and there was a reassignment. Um, I have two emails and one of the emails is, well, they're, I'm not going to name drop, but there's two emails from both people that they are interested in another four years. In serving on planning and zoning. When I was on planning and zoning, um, we did have a person that didn't show up for the winter months. They were gone and I asked Mr. Franchek, he was chair then. I said, what, can we open it up? And he goes, no, he's like, we always allow them to, except if they want another term. We don't ever kick them off or if they want another term, it's accepted. So then I had seen that both of these commissioners accepted another four years. And then the, the information I'd gotten was published on the Stark County Facebook page, which I was kind of surprised. This, um, was not notified to me. I was still the chair and a commissioner at this time because it was done in November. And it was placed by a fictitious name. So it was put on our Stark County Facebook page saying that they were looking for somebody that was interested on the planning and zoning. And the name that is put on this Stark County's face, Facebook page is Jane Stark. Well, from the last four years, I know there's not a Jane Stark here. So I just guess I'd like to know, both people were very interested in serving. They both did a great job. I served with both of them. Both of them were on committees. And I just guess, I asked Amanda on who made the decision to advertise this before I was done being a commissioner? Who made the decision, and nothing against Commissioner White, Commissioner Clarice, who made decision to send this to them in October or in November when they weren't sworn in yet? And who made the decision to get one, get rid of one planning and zoning member, but not the other? When neither one had any faults against them? And I, from Ms. Ingelsted, she said, we don't have any more information on this. You're going to go have to find the person that decided to do this. Well, who's the person? And she's like, well, somebody must've did it by phone or by meeting. Well, I'm thinking that's backdoor meeting then. And if it's a phone call, kind of scares the hell out of me. Cause there goes our transparency and I wasn't even done being a commissioner yet. Do I have any issues with who was put on for planning and zoning? No. But Commissioner Messer, you made the, when you made the motion, you made the motion to add on this person. You didn't put the motion on that you were adding on this person to replace this other person. So the person on this board that made the second had no idea. The commissioner thought that was just another member being added on. So what I just, I would like to know what did this planning and zoning member do compared to the other one? Why she got the boot and the other one didn't? And I just guess I, I guess I'd like to know. And I guess a lot of people called me because I was still chair then. Well, they called me in December and said, why did you put this on in November? And I said, I didn't put it on in November. So I just would like to know who gave the authority to put it on the Stark County Facebook page in November using a fictitious name?
I'm not familiar with our Facebook, why the fictitious name? But it's always been, we have had the Facebook and we've had the website that we advertised on it. But in the, and it came out to my attention, I'm being, being the chair of the planning and zoning, that the, those two terms are up for real, for, their terms are up at that time. It was notified Mr. Josephson. So I asked our human resources director to advertise, because that's what our plan was all along. To have anybody to show, anybody else was showing interest in any of these boards, that we'd put it out to the public so they'd have a chance to apply for these boards if they're interested in them. That's what we've done in the past. So then I asked the human resource officer director to edit, pierce it, I had put it on, on that advertise. And that's when it came forward then that Brock White was interested in it. And then the two other, by, at the meeting, I told them the two other board members are currently on or are interested in on it, but we need to point two peoples for that. And then I have the most right in front of me, the, by Mr. Messer, was to point Brock White and re-employ Sue Larson to the Stark County zoning board for, for your terms is what the motion was.
Yeah, but you didn't say that you were, it didn't say on there that you were excluding Sandy Coontz, Commissioner Coontz.
My discussion before that was saying we had two openings and I told you Sandra Coontz and Sue Larson's two positions that were up for, on the terms and that Brock White had showed interest in it. And then normally in the past, we've always kind of made it regionalized to have someone from each area of the county on. So, I mean, no, and no one applied for the Taylor area. On it, we had two people that, you know, from the south or southwest of Dickinson area there. So that's in the
But I just guess like, that's why I don't
The commission has the final decision on that.
Yes.
You know, made
I just don't understand Chairman Franchek. I asked you, when I was on I asked you, when I was on the board, I asked you because there was a commissioner that didn't show up for five meetings because there were snowbird. And I asked you that.
It still goes to the commission to make that decision if they want to remove or not, not the zoning board.
But I asked you, we do, I said, you know what? Her term is up. It wasn't to remove her. It was her term was up. I was like, do we open it up to other people that are, you know, also interested? And you said, no, if just because their term is up.
We advertised, I remember we even appointed one, the one time in the, the first part of 2009, 19, that we had, uh, seven people that all put interest in it for being a planning. So we committed, had a committee that was created and then we interviewed all these people.
That's because.
And then recommend, recommended them to the commission, but the commission made the final decision.
That's because Mr. Grundhauser quit. Never, ever has there been a planning and zoning member removed if they were interested in another term. It was people that retired. I made calls from way back. If they retired, then it was opened up. So I just wonder, I was just wondering what switched now?
Yeah. So I, I can address the, the question that was directed towards me. So, uh, we received a packet from Karen, which had all the boards that we have the ability to appoint vacancies on or, or fill positions. And I believe, Karen, get me wrong, the, there was highlighted in yellow, here are the ones that the terms expire that you have to deal with immediately. And one of them was my term on the job development authority. And I responded that, uh, it's my wish and intention to get reappointed to that. There was two on the P and Z. Dean is correct. It was, and I don't understand the Jane Stark thing to start, I don't, that, that's whatever. But, uh, I received two, two calls from individuals who wanted to be on the board. One was Brock White and the other one was Sue Larson. And so Brock met the geographical balance that filled the person whose term was up.
But she sent the email just the same time as Sue, that she was interested.
That, that's, that wasn't part of my decision making process. I want to get people involved who want to be there. Now, you can say whatever you want about Sue Larson, Snowbird not being here, whatever. She notifies, uh, the board. She was the only applicant interested in that geographical Taylor area, whatever you want to call it. So you had two people interested from the geographical area and Brock reached out to me. So if, if, if I see someone and he fills a unique position where he's a city commissioner in one of our smaller communities, fine. I don't think we have ownership as an independent citizen. We don't own our position on these various boards. We're appointed at the discretion of the board. The board has that discretion. Right, wrong, indifferent, you disagree, that's fine. I appreciate that. Appreciate your comments. But the board filled it and that's, that's.
I think that you would have had some people on the board that probably wouldn't have made that decision if the motion was made in a way that you were going to.
Everybody got the same packet. Read your packets.
So, and planning and zoning is at large. So I understand. And, I mean, be it what it may, Commissioner Coontz is not very far away from Brock White.
He fits the same, that's why I said, fits the same geographical area that Sandra Coontz was in. So you had somebody who expressed your interest, who wanted to be in there, who lives in that area, fits the niche of being a city commissioner. We don't have any other city, city commissioners on the, uh, P and Z at that point. I thought it made sense. So I'm fine.
So is that going to be the new policy? Are we going to like, because before we went and opened it up, Dean was right. I was on that committee or Chairman Franchek was right. And we opened it up, there was seven people that were interviewed. So we would have the best person.
So I can actually touch on some of that. First was with the Jane Stark. That was Joetta posting because we use, Jane Stark is the person that they use to do those posts, is that correct? Yeah, in the, on the admin page.
Is Jane Stark a person or is?
No, it's, that's why they named it Jane Stark is because. So Jane Stark is who would do the posts if there had to be a post. That's, so Jane Stark isn't a random person. That's just, and I'm pretty sure that's why they picked Jane Stark is for that reason. So that's Joetta. As far as the, the board portion goes, so what happened was, is when the, when we had the election was over and terms were up and commissioners were being replaced, I was going through the list and I had the portfolios list and then I had the boards list. And, um, as far as the portfolios list goes, um, it was, these are all the portfolios. You know, I sent out the list to everybody. I said, um, you know, this is the term. They have their terms beside them. And then these are also commissioner spots, like the JDA specifically to a commissioner. And then separately, I have a list of actual, the actual boards and, um, and the terms that are expiring. And back when, I would say in 2021 was the first time I brought it up to Dean and I said, you know, because I thought it was odd, because like I'm on another board, I'm on like the fair board and stuff. And I thought it was odd in the meetings how, um, we would all kind of look at each other and say, do you want another term? I thought that was very odd. You know, do you want to continue another term? So I, I, I just don't, I don't get that because you're not, you're just keeping the same people on, but you're not giving anybody else an opportunity to apply. So I had brought that up to Dean first in 2021. So when those, um, terms were coming up due that we had to open spots, I said, this is a great opportunity for us to put it out there and then, you know, that these boards are opening, we can have some people apply for maybe outside. And then you also have the people that are already on the board and want to re-up their term and the commission can decide amongst them. And, um, I talked to Dean about that because he was personnel and Joetta is the one that was doing the posting. And, and he, you know, he said, yeah, I mean, we should, but we're doing it across the board. So we did it for, um, planning and zoning. And there's two more planning and zoning members that are coming up this year and it'd be the same thing. Also did it for, is it Southwest District Health?
I don't know. It was the job development.
Job development, Southwest District Health though. We did a health one too. And then we are also doing that for the job housing authority board. So I, I think it, I think it's a great way to do things instead of just having the board look at each other and say, do you want to do another term? But that was my thought.
So is this another, is this a new policy? Is this a new guideline? Are you going to do these some years and not other years? How is somebody going to know? Because not any of the planning and zoning members had a clue this was going on. I was still chairman at that time. I understand Dean did, and I know I was told to cut the cord right after election. I had a job to do till the end of November. So I just find this.
It wasn't, it wasn't a change that we did it all the way back in 2019. We did that, you know, we put it out for the people who was interested. It was nothing that was changed.
You didn't put it out. We didn't put it out when the other ones, you just said we automatically.
How did we get seven applicants then if we didn't?
That time we did because that was a retirement.
We were doing this since 2019.
It was a, it was a retirement.
Still was an opening on the board. It's, the opening is an opening.
I guess all the commissioners that I talked to said that they thought that that was great for transparency, let other people apply that are interested. The ones that I talked to felt that way.
And I, even myself, I agreed upon that, you know, having transparency and going on merit and instead of just, you know, and letting, just because your last name's Messer, you get to stay on the, on the board. So, but I agree. So.
And new, and new blood is the great idea, new, new bloods. Again, nothing against the previous commissioner, but the, when you get someone young and energetic and enthusiastic about wanting to serve on a board and they make the call and they reach out and they solicit for it, I am going to support that. So, uh, we don't need a new policy. We're just going to, you know, continuing on what we're doing. That, that's fine. So I'm, I'm good with it.
So when other commissioners come on, then they can change and do it. They can go and change if, when other commissioners in two years come on or four years come on.
It's at county commission discretion.
Okay, that's what I'm just asking.
We just said that.
It's, it's just the positions that are selected by the county commission and approved by the county commission that, you know, we can't make another, it's them that are approving those. You can't, you know, make a board that selects their own member, follow the same thing, but they can for the commission side. And so, just trying to make it like unilateral crossed is where we were.
Well, I just think it should be a little bit more transparent so people understand when you make your motions. I mean, the motion should have been made. I don't think that is fair to somebody that's serving on a board for four years and put a lot of work into it. And she doesn't even get a phone call. She doesn't even get the courtesy as a Stark County P and Z. It's not always easy to fill these. And just like being a commissioner, it takes a few years to learn about it. And I just feel that everybody better, should get treated the same. Because I have a feeling it's just going to turn into another good old boys' club and whoever you, somebody knows is going to get on a board.
That's exactly the opposite of what we're doing. If we'd have just said, okay, you want to be on the board for four more years? You want to be on the board for four more years? Yep. That's the good old boys' club. We reached out, accepted applications, people who were interested, the people, I didn't get a call from Sandra Coontz. So, uh, whether she was interested.
You weren't on P and Z. You're not on P and Z. Why would she call you?
The county commission makes that decision. You disagree with that? So anyway.
No, I just, I guess I disagree with the way it was handled. Because I was.
I don't know why you can be more transparent. We advertise, anybody who wants to, wants a position to come forward and then we make the decision here who is.
It wasn't advertised for people to, it wasn't, was it advertised on?
It was on the website and it was on Facebook where, you know, we advertised for it.
Well, and then I just have a, a quick question with the Rough Rider North Zone Board. I'm fine. I mean, you know what? There was a person that stepped down. I was not a commissioner anymore. I would be then a layperson. I knew him well. I was part of the board for four years. It was a unanimous decision on the board that I stay on the board. And four commissioners voted on it from all different counties. So unanimously voted. Stark County isn't the only one on the Rough Rider North Zone Board. There's five counties. And all four of those commissioners from the other five counties unanimously voted that they would like me on the board. So I was the layperson. I understand, there's right here, I understand on chapter 5001, it says, the board of county commissioners of each county within the human service zone board. And I mean, that's fine. You know, it's like, there was an extra three, there's three extra spots on that board. And I was willing to keep serving, but I just kind of found that there was four people that applied, there's five spots on that board. Paul, when you said and you made your recommendation from the police department, you didn't let the other commissioners know that by making that motion, you were review, removing me? Even though, even though there was three other spots?
Yes. Yes and yes. The fact of the matter is that, first of all, after review, uh, the, the election that took place in November, appointing you vice chairman of the, of the board was done in error. That board is not appointing at-large people. That is not in their purview. So there's a, there's a technicality right there. Okay?
Dean was, Dean, um, Dean, um, Dean, Commissioner Dean Rodney was voted in as chair.
You were voted, uh, I thought you were vice chair.
Nope, I was chair, but then as soon as I moved over to a layperson, then Dean Rodney.
In his chair. She is chair of the.
No, Dean Rodney is chair and Diane leads the meeting.
Well, I'm not entirely sure about that. I'm not sure I can agree with that actually. I think she actually leads the meeting and she is actually the chair. So the fact of the matter is that election took place in error. There should have never been an election. That board cannot internally appoint at-large members. Okay? Therefore, the process was followed according to statute whereby we advertised and you applied, which you appreciate. There's really nothing against you here, but.
Oh, Paul.
Each Stark County, each county, each county, uh, has the opportunity to appoint an at-large member. Okay? Billings has got theirs, Dunn's got theirs, Golden Valley, so on and so forth. And, um, there needed to be a, make, made an appointment for Stark County at-large person. I am fully 100% comfortable with the, the, the choice of Mr. Lites as an appointed person to that, at, at large position. I don't think we've, I don't think it was a bad choice and I definitely don't think we did this in error anyway. I think we followed it to the letter. And honestly, I mean, talking about good old boy stuff, this was definitely not a good old boy thing. This was advertised, you can smile all you want.
I'm just smiling.
This was advertised, uh, and, and handled appropriately. Do you, do you disagree with our appointment of Mr. Lites?
No, I don't know. I, no, I don't disagree with your appointment.
He has a lot to add.
No, I think he's a lot to add. I just disagree with the fact that there was three more positions open there and there was four more, there was four commissioners from four other counties.
To, to go further, uh, Stark County has kind of used up its at-large position here. You've got Kelly Cottenger, who's a Stark County resident.
But he, he was, um.
Is he a Stark County resident?
He would, no, he got elected on because he's New England teacher. So he was from the New England area. That's why he was elected on.
Stark County resident. Holly Prowse, she's a Stark County resident. She.
But best friends program, which, I mean.
Sunshine.
Sunshine Youth, which she does all of the area. So that's why she was on.
Not to over, uh, I think that the board itself is, we've got fairly good Stark County representation. We've got three positions on there of the at-large positions. I mean, that leaves room for the other counties to add, uh, at-large.
How many positions does Stark County allotted? Is it three? Because it's a commissioner.
It's a, one commissioner and like I said, I don't know if there's an exact term or, or amount of people that can be.
There's not a number, there's not a number of the at-large to where, there's a number of how many at-large, but it doesn't, it doesn't say how many at-large from each county.
I think what the, the goal is to be diverse across the.
I was going to say Stark County can't pick them all, can they?
Exactly. Of the zone region. You need to have some representation or you'd like to have some representation from the zone region. So like I said, I, I, I get you and by all accounts, you did a good job on that board. There's nothing wrong with you, but as far as that goes, I mean, this was, um, I really feel like we did it the right way.
I think you did it the right way, but you could have informed two of the commissioners that you were voting for him to kick me off. You could have made your motion saying, we are putting on him and that, in that case, we are removing Carla Arthod. You could have made your motion transparent, so then all the commissioners would have understood that. That's all I'm saying.
All the applicants were named that were applied for.
Yes.
At the meeting, they were all named.
You were, everybody's resume was, uh, was reviewed prior to that vote.
Prior.
Including yours.
They all had their, your applications. They had everybody's.
Yes, they weren't named to the public when you made the motion is what I mean.
So is it pretty much easy to assume that we didn't, that you didn't get the, you didn't get the appointment that, I, I don't know, I don't follow your thinking.
Well, I guess I was just kind of, I was kind of lost because Diane didn't really know if I was off because there were a few more openings. The other commissioners thought I was staying on because I was elected by them, because they were from the other counties. And they didn't think it was fair that Stark County got to make the decision all in all.
But there was a, there was an opinion from the state's attorney over in Billings County. I forget his name, Weir or.
Mr. Weir.
Mr. Weir on how the positions needed to be filled. He, he as the, uh, attorney for that zone board since Billings County basically laid out the guidelines on how it was. Uh, I remember getting that information somehow, one way or the other, including the, uh, the information on the four applicants. And it was pretty specified that, uh, he laid out a directive, he laid out a process how that position should be filled and it was followed. So, uh, that's as transparent, I think, as you can be. So, you know, I, I'm not going to go up and make a motion that I appointed an individual to a board, uh, in, uh, in absence of not appointing this person, this person, this person. That's not appropriate. So, uh, you, you make a nomination and I believe Paul made the nomination, is carrying that portfolio, uh, to, to appoint Mr. Lites and, uh, so that's what it is.
Well, on different board members, when they work so hard on the board, commissioner or not, give them a letter. Send them a letter and say, you know what? You are no longer on this board. Give them a phone call.[1736.44] Don't put something up by Jane Stark. So when people call me in residence and say, does there a Jane Stark in Stark County? I didn't realize that was put on the Facebook page. You know, I still get a lot of phone calls, so just be transparent. And I'm disappointed, Mr. Franchek, because you definitely said when it was Sue Larson, and she was up two years ago, and I said, well, do we open up her spot? And you went, no, we just automatically, if she wants it, we automatically vote her in. We don't open spots.
I said, if there's anybody else interested, they could come forward, and nobody else showed interest.
No, but you didn't advertise it, it wasn't advertised or nothing.
I don't recall, but we've been advertising any damn position comes up, so.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa, Isaiah, County Perks Director. Just a quick thing on that Facebook, because I know some of the people that are watching this aren't going to understand that. It's, you do not want an entity's Facebook page to be tied to an individual employee. If that employee leaves, they own that page. That is where the Jane Stark, and that's been there, well, I've been here five years, and it was prior to that. There's a Jane Stark, and there's a John Stark, and there's two accounts. So there's always control, should one employee leave, we always have control of the other one. And I know this because I just updated them with the logos. So, just so you know, nobody's trying to be secretive with that, nobody's trying to do that, but it is in the best interest of an entity to have that not tied to an individual. And Facebook requires it's tied to an individual, that's where that Jane and John Stark came from.
And I think there probably can be a statement that states that, I mean, I wasn't aware of that, but it makes total sense.
We could probably even put it in the description on the Facebook.
Absolutely.
Makes a lot of sense.
That's all.
Thank you for explaining that, because I don't have a Facebook account, so I had to run it.
Okay, anything else? I had to look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, if there was a second, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
If opposed.